Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this evening, October the 8th, 2018. The hour is 5:30. I will call us all to order and ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner Denise Terry.
Thank you. In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I will offer a prayer against cancer. Please bow with me. God Almighty, we call upon your blessed name and we pray for your merciful heart to surround those with love, strength, and courage, and we ask your hands to touch them with the power of healing. May they be directed to the right treatment in your blessed name as we ask you, Lord, to represent the physicians, doctors, and medical care aides and administer them in your spirit. May every cancerous cell be cast out and replaced with good ones. May every spot of this deadly cell be wiped out by your powerful hands. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to ask that we be led in the pledge of allegiance tonight by Sheriff Derek Robbins. Sheriff, I'd like you to come up and if you remember it, if you do remember it, right? Okay, that's a good thing.
You told me it was a nail or housekeeping thing.
That's...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Sheriff. Now, don't run off. He's got something for you. While you all commit over there, the rest of us are going to move forward.
He wasn't supposed to make a speech. He wasn't supposed to make a speech.
Don't hold it against me here.
Commissioner, you've had the agenda in front of you. Unless I hear otherwise, I will assume that it meets with your approval.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to ask your indulgence on a small change. I have the pleasure and privilege, actually, Norma Gail?
Yes, I'm down here.
I'm going to let you do the intro.
We are really privileged to have, as part of the Sister Cities Program, an exchange artist from Belfast. He is, it's really a unique thing what he's doing. He is painting a mural in sections at Danville High School, and it will be installed on the side of the Elmwood T Building on the 18th of October at 5:00 p.m. And this man is an international artist, and if you can, he said, please excuse the way he looks because I have to, we have to rush him right back to Danville High School to get back to work on the mural. But Dee has completed murals in Los Angeles, New York, and in the mall...
Philadelphia.
...at Washington DC and Philadelphia where Charles and Camilla came and did some painting on it. Now, we're really upset that William and Kate have not gotten to Danville to participate in this one, but we have notified them. They're out of order here. So, I would like for the city to welcome Dee Craig and the lovely Linda. And we are so honored and privileged to have the opportunity to meet these wonderful people. It's just been a delight. And they're painting with a open class for community participation tonight from 6:00 to 7:00.
6:00 to 7:00.
From tomorrow from...
1:00 to 3:00.
1:00 to 3:00. So, get yourselves up there in some paint clothes and at least slap a little paint on. Thank you so much, and we are so delighted to have these two with us.
Would you care to say anything? You don't have to.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
No, thank you for your kind words, Gail. Thank you to the city for welcoming myself, and we've just been taken back by the beauty and the huge welcome we've got from the city. It's just totally amazing to be part of this project, you know, and also to be an ambassador for my part of the world. You know, but the Sister Cities Program is, it's an amazing program, and it's something that should be built upon, you know, and we hope to engage as much youth at present in this program in particular. But we had a conversation earlier, and we're talking about driving the youth forward, and youth need to become the driving force of the Sister Cities Program. So hopefully, this, this project should leave a platform to start a conversation of maybe the possibilities of youth programs and exchanges in the future between our two fine countries. Thank you very much.
Indeed, before we let you go, I have the pleasure and privilege of presenting you the key to our city.
Oh, thank you.
We want you and Linda to feel welcome, just like any citizen would be in this community. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Norma Gail?
Uh-huh.
What time is the open painting?
Tonight from, you probably won't make it because we're just going to quit at 7:00, but tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00 at Danville High School. And I didn't specify, but much of this painting is done by the students and the community.
Yeah.
And it's a mural that nobody has had any problems with. And we are going to slip out because we're getting back to Danville High School.
Thank you all for coming.
She said 6:00 o'clock. What, what?
6:00 to 7:00 tonight.
6:00? Well, I think she just, she just upped the ante for us to be finished by 6:00 o'clock.
That's right. I agree with that. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We're going to be there at 6:00, though, all right?
Challenge accepted.
Challenge accepted.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Challenge accepted.
All right, we are now in that, huh?
We have the other two additions to the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we're going to do that on down here.
Oh, is it on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're in the section that we call "Here the Public." This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the microphone to talk about any subject that is on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right along to item number one. And Donna, did you, do we need to switch this up? Is that okay? The order we got it in? Okay. Item one is the pending of Assistant Police Chief Glenn Dunn.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Glenn Dunn here. Glenn started with the Danville Police Department back in 2006 as a patrolman. He graduated from the Department of Criminal Justice Training, Basic Class 377. Glenn was promoted to Sergeant in 2009 and Captain in 2013. Glenn has served as a patrol training officer and has supervised our PTA program for the last several years. Glenn holds several Defensive Tactical Instruction, instructors certifications from Problem Maga, Gage, and DOC JT. Glenn coordinates the department's yearly Defensive Tactical Recertification Training and supervises the new higher physical agility testing. The police department participates in the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council's Career Development Program, and Captain Dunn holds pins as an intermediate officer, which requires 160 hours of in-service training in technical and human skills, and he also holds the supervisor's pin, which requires another 160 hours and consists of 40 hours in conceptual, conceptual development. Dunn is an Academy of Police Supervision graduate. It's a 120-hour Sergeant's Academy over at DOC JT, and he recently completed Northwestern University Center for Public School Safety of Police Staff in Command, Class 427, which is 400 hours and is also the equivalent to the FBI's National Academy. Glenn is married to Brenna Dunn, and they have two daughters, Audrey and Piper. I guess Piper's a little young. She's not here tonight. And they live in Perrville. Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to have Brenna, his wife, help me to pin the oak leaves on Lieutenant Colonel Glenn Dunn as the new Assistant Chief of the Danville Police Department.
Yeah.
(APPLAUSE). It's nervous when people are watching. Never get on as fast as you can.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
I tried to get her to practice last night, but... I'd like to thank Chief Gray for the opportunity, everybody else that's supported me in my years here at the police department. I'd like to also thank my wife and family members as well that's supported me. City of Danville, Danville Police Department, Danville Fire Department, there's a bright future here. We've got a lot of work to do, and we're moving in the right direction, and I look forward to the challenge. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Gray. Item two is the proclamation of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, to which I want to ask Commissioner Terry to read that for us, please.
National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October has been set aside as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a time to educate women and men on the importance of early detection of breast cancer. And whereas this disease is the second most commonly diagnosed cancer in women and men in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of cancer death in women, with an estimated quarter million new cases of invasive breast cancer expected to be diagnosed among women and men in the U.S. this year. An average one woman is diagnosed every two minutes. And whereas October 19th, 2018 is National Mammography Day, and early detection and treatment can save lives, we encourage all women and men to find out if they are at increased risk by completing the necessary screenings. And whereas, although the statistics are staggering, we are encouraged that survival rates have drastically improved due to increased awareness and innovative advancement in early detection and treatment. And whereas, we encourage everyone to display their support of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month by displaying bold pink ribbons showing the support for breast cancer survivors and reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness of the disease and as a symbol of hope. Whereas Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the City of Danville on this 8th day of October do hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all residents to celebrate life beyond breast cancer by supporting and attending events in the city that recognize breast cancer awareness during the month of October and throughout the year.
We have with us Mr. Ruggles from Efer McDowall. If you would take that to him and perhaps get a picture taken.
Okay.
Mr. Ruggles, introduce yourself. Tell the audience what you do.
My name is Doug Ruggles. I'm the System Director of Diagnostic Services for Efer McDowall Health. It's a big, long title. Mammography is one of the areas of my responsibility, and of that, we're most proud of the new, somewhat new, it's 18 months old now, but the new Women's Breast and Health Center at 101 Daniel Drive. The uniqueness of this center is that for about 18 months now, we've been able to offer the service of same-day results on mammography screening, which is unique to our area. It was something that was a challenge that our staff felt like they were up to, and the radiologists who work hard to get these results out. And we do not only offer same-day reads. If you want your appointment earlier or later in the day, you still have the option to come in and have that mammogram done, and you can go on your way, and you will have results within a couple of days. So, on behalf of Efer McDowall, I am very excited and happy to be here to accept this proclamation, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Always feel welcome. Appreciate what you do.
Now that I've set this up here, there we go.
I'll move to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioners Sears, Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion? Seeing none, on favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Excellent. Item two is the National Fire Safety Prevention Week 2018. Mr. Heatherly, where are you, sir?
You might have told you.
Way you can't get shot at too bad.
No, that's all right.
Whereas, the City of Danville, Kentucky is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Danville, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas, home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2017. According to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires. And whereas, the majority of the U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year, Danville citizens should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And Danville citizens should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas, Danville citizens should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. Whereas, the Danville Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Danville citizens are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Mayor G. Michael Paris, and the City of Danville Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 7th through 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Danville, and urge all the citizens of Danville to be aware of their surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency. Respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Danville Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2018. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
All right, appreciate it. Speak.
Okay. I'll take a good hint from the last guy. I won't set this down on the podium without my fingers under it. At least, I would like to thank the mayor and the commission for recognizing the fire department during Fire Prevention Week. It turns out usually that our fire department, it turns into a Fire Prevention Month, which kind of extends to a Fire Prevention Year. The fire department, we don't have just a week that we do fire prevention efforts in the city. We, we carry those out all year long, and especially, kind of like to thank Randy Fo. Randy's a retired firefighter, works part-time. He installs a lot of smoke detectors in the city. He works hard to make sure that we have a supply available, and that that's available to anyone that needs a smoke detector can call the fire department and have one given to them for free, as long as we have the supply available. But it's, it's good to recognize and to celebrate this week that we go out in the schools, we do a lot of that this month, and we appreciate that. And also, this month is a, yesterday was the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial up in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and the prevention, announced prevention is worth a pound of cure, as they always say. So, if we can prevent a fire, we can save lives of our citizens, save damage to property in the city, and as well, prevent injuries and deaths to the fire personnel that have to respond to those incidents. So, thank you very much for the proclamation.
You want to, you want to introduce your entourage?
Absolutely. So, we'll start with Lieutenant Patrick Denham in the white shirt. Patrick's a paramedic firefighter with the fire department. We've got firefighter David Spanier, he's acting company officer, and he's filling in the seat for Lieutenant Blake Moore while he's on injury. We've got Justin McBride. We're going in seniority, AG. Just wait a second. Justin McBride's a firefighter. Today's engineer for the ladder truck. Generally, he's the operator for the ladder truck. Joshua AG would be next. Joshua's a firefighter. He's in his second year with the department. And Christopher Souter. Chris is also a new firefighter with us. He's in his first year doing, both of them doing a really good job. We have Stephen Glowak, who's a part-time firefighter at the department and was a former Navy firefighter with the U.S. Navy. So, these guys do a lot of work every day to, to respond to and, and help prevent and, and take the time out. Just today, I think we've done three station tours today, walk-up station tours with kids and show them the fire trucks and, and talk to them about if they have questions about fire safety. So, it's an everyday thing, and I appreciate these guys for putting in the effort and, and having that enthusiasm about it that they always do. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, we know, we know you got a new fire truck, but do you have to drive it all over town all day long?
It was going somewhere. It was gone.
Oh, okay. Do I hear proclamation of approval?
I move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, discussion? Thank you again, gentlemen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that being September 24th.
Move for approval of minutes of the meeting of September 24th as presented.
Next, Commissioner Cottle, second.
Second.
Mr. Atkins, discussion, corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five is the active shooter exercise report. We have with us tonight Mr. Mike Wilder. Mr. Wilder, welcome.
Here I am, non-armed, quad, two, three. Sheriff Robbins there.
There you go. Now, those are your bodyguards. That's not your entourage.
I need both of them.
I was going to say, that's the ugliest entourage I've ever seen.
I don't think that qualifies as an entourage.
They get their hair cut at the same place.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, 30 years ago, we wouldn't even be thinking about, talking about having a scenario in a school of an active shooter. That would have been something, you know, nobody wants to talk about that.
10 years ago.
But it doesn't take very long to think about the past of what we've had over the past 10 years or so of active shooter scenarios and active shooter incidents. Of course, in January this year, we had the active shooter down in Marshall County. We put it really close to home. We felt like then it was time that we get proactive on this and think about what we can do because we have two wonderful school systems in this county, and, you know, there's a lot of young people out there, and a lot of things can happen. So, we've, we began to work on it. About a nine-month period of time that it took us, we planned this and thought about it and had meeting after meeting, and I think it turned out well with what we did. It, the evaluators that were here, and by the way, we had evaluators from Homeland Security, Kentucky Emergency Management, the FBI, and two people that do evaluations for full-time. And they, every one gave us passing grades on what we did. The areas that we had, everything that we did, we have five things that we wanted to try to take care of and look at, and those five things were, of course, the initial call and response, search and rescue, medical triage and care, communications, and multi-agency jurisdictional getting together and knowing who's where and where everything is going. And, and we accomplished all of those things, but we didn't do it without challenges. I'll be very honest. Each one of the five areas that we did, we had some challenges. Some were greater than others, but we were able to accomplish those, and that was the main thing. And just being, it would be a long time since we've had a full-scale exercise in this county with all the responding agencies being involved in it. It worked out. We had about 117 students, staff, out at Bull County High School participate in this. It was a pretty big thing. We had some 55 first responders, not including the group at the hospital, which responded and did well in this. So, it, it was quite an undertaking. We've got a lot of things to work on as any time you test, that's what you have exercises for. We accomplished a lot, but we have a lot to do yet. Chief Gray and Sheriff Robbins, just going to kind of give you a little background on what we did law enforcement-wise.
The chief and I got together and the, the main cause of death in a lot of these active shooter situations is exsanguination, where they're bleeding to death. And what happens is, is people are laying there injured, and the law enforcement officers are going to stop the shooter, and in the meantime, the people that have been injured are laying there bleeding to death. And in emergency medicine, they have this thing, it's called the golden hour, and it's from the time that you receive an injury, especially penetrating trauma like that, you've got about an hour to get to a trauma center because you have to stop the bleeding because that bullet has either went through an organ, a vessel, an artery, and your heart's still pumping, and it's pumping blood out into whatever hole was made. So, we have to find a way to clog that hole as quick as possible. So, what we tried to implement, and we had never done before, and it worked out well, is as the, the teams went in, which was, I think it was two or three Danville PD guys and two SO guys went in to find the shooter, then some of the SO guys and PD guys covered some of the paramedics that are trained to be tactical paramedics, as they go in and start evacuating the injured, even before the scene is completely safe, which that's not common because a lot of emergency medical services are always going to wait until the scene is safe. And there's a, you know, there's a lot of times where we respond to stuff, and they, they stage in an area, and they won't enter that scene until the scene is safe. And for our EMS service to be willing to take that risk to save the people that are in there injured is, is pretty extraordinary because there are a lot of agencies that just won't do it. They're like, that's not my job. I'm not going into that danger zone until it's safe. And they're willing to do that. They actually have body armor that they can wear, and the officers go in and kind of set up a perimeter and cover while the paramedics are evacuating the injured behind us. That's something that we wanted to try to implement because there's times that it may, it may actually take well over an hour to clear that whole school of any actors, actors or shooters or accomplices, and that whole time that that scene's not safe yet, those people are laying there bleeding, and, and somebody ultimately is going to die from that. So, that's something that we got together with and, and implemented, and it actually worked really well. I think we evacuated like 15 people in like eight minutes, which otherwise, they would have been there a lot longer. And, you know, there were things that, since it was new, that we saw that we could do different, maybe make it more efficient, but overall, I, I think it worked really, really well.
Yeah, I think that was the biggest thing that we did that we'd never done before. We had, we've had a couple of drills, three years ago, two years ago, hospital. We had the hospital and the Center College drill, but neither one of those drills had we used the tactical medics to enter right, right after the entry team enters. We saw how much resources that takes immediately, and like Derek said, there's some shortcomings when doing that because we're both short on resources as far as manpower. But I thought it was a great drill just to see how those things would happen and, and what it's going to take to be better and to be more efficient at those things. I can't say enough about, we've mentioned a little bit, MS and the hospital, but also we had county fire represented there and Danville City Fire. And truly, for an incident to, if we have to face an incident on that scale, whether it be a shooter at the school or somewhere else, it's going to take all the emergency services in this county, as well as the others around us, to help us handle that situation. And, and we had talked to some other agencies, so that was part of the drill. We didn't have them come over, but I know that the county fire and the city fire both spoke to other fire departments outside, and they would take calls and stuff like that inside the city while we take care of this incident. We would also have, you know, the state police and ATF or somebody like that. We've got connections... We've got connections now with the backup program, where we can call on other law enforcement agencies in the region to come and assist on that. So, it was a good drill, learned a lot of things, and, you know, we'll keep moving forward.
We cleared the school. The school was cleared in just a little over 50 minutes. It was shut down and everybody was dead. And that's remarkable to get the number of students and injured out of there within that length of time.
Mike, how did the, how did the students respond to all this?
Well, you know, that was kind of the, we threw it back and forth about involving the students. You know, there's a couple of different sides to that, but believe it or not, Mayor, they were just absolutely overwhelmed to do something, and the parents were too. They were just very cooperative. When we went in the night that we had the meeting before we had the exercise, the cafeteria out of Boil County School was full, and we just, I couldn't imagine that. Chris Holderman out there does a good job, and he was very instrumental in doing a lot of the things that we did and getting the cooperation. But yes, they were, they were great. They were great. And it wasn't any of this, you know, laughing and carrying on. They took it pretty dag on serious. They really did. Don't you all think?
What, Mike, it occurred to me, if this were to happen, say, you know, at KSD, that adds a whole nother layer of issue. I mean, is that something you've, I'm sure you've considered, and I don't know if you've...
We've talked about it, and we've actually talked about doing something on a smaller scale down there, just to involve them, to get them realizing that something can happen there as well as it can anyplace else. But that does open up an awful lot more logistic problems and that to deal with, to deal with those folks down there and the kids. But we're gonna, we're gonna do something. Yeah, we've got, we've got some plans for that, yes, as well as Danville High School, too. We're gonna, we're gonna move on that with things changing as they have up there in the past few months. We feel like, you know, we know where we're going now and who we're dealing with, and we're gonna work on that as well.
I actually was at the school when they did this scenario, and the children and students really, they took it very seriously. They, I was very impressed by that.
Good.
Yeah.
I want to compliment you guys for being proactive and scoring well on that and remind the commissioners and the public that Mike sits on the Safe Communities, and we are certified Safe Communities, so this plays in well with that and shows that we're doing our part. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do. Item six is the first reading of ordinance number 1924. This is the Planning and Zoning Map Amendment. Donna, if you'd like to read that, please.
This is an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Danville Boil County Planning and Zoning Commission to expand the historic preservation overlay district within the city of Danville by incorporating therein the Montgomery Rhodes House and the Willis-Russell Memorial House.
Do I hear a motion to approve the first reading?
So, move.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Terry, discussion.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, these were owner-initiated changes that they...
They were, and the planning commission had hearings, and the AHB, DAHB had hearings, and both recommended approval. So, this was presented last time by Steve Hunter, and you had a voice vote in support of it, so this is the ordinance that solidifies your previous instruction.
And these are standalone properties?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments, discussions? Then I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign, motion carries.
Roll call?
Do we need a roll call on that?
We can do it on the second motion.
You do, I prefer that you do it on every ordinance, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry? Yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Seres?
Yes.
Item seven is code enforcement report. Ms. Lester?
Hello. Well, before we do this month's report, I was gonna report on the swan from last month's report.
On what?
The swan. You remember, you asked what the swan was? It was a complaint because the swan was getting out of their pond into a neighbor's yard, so.
Okay. You should be dogged.
Somebody was not happy. We had 26 notice violations issued this month and a total of 162 inspections and complaints. We had 18 parking tickets issued, and we issued 28 business licenses. September's been a very busy month. I put some pictures in here also to show you the 200 North Hillendale, where they're doing a massive $100 million renovation down there, so that's a good thing for that Also, Michelle Gossar and I attended the Kentucky Occupational License Association Seminar, and I attended the Kentucky League of Cities Conference, and did a presentation on ABC Practical Applications at that. We had our Kentucky ABC Administrators Association there. I am currently serving as the president of that organization and have been reappointed to serve as president of that. And JD Chaney also gave us the good news that we will have a seat on the KLC Board of Directors, so I will serve in that role as well. So...
Congratulations.
Yes.
And you have an updated condemned properties list in your packet, as well as new liens. And I'll entertain any questions you might have.
I'll start by saying congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. That looks good for us. It's a statewide organization, Kentucky League of Cities, and we have representation out of our small, little fair city of Danville. We appreciate that. Also, just a couple of things, since I have the microphone, and again, what you folks are doing and reporting to us is good for the citizens. There's a couple of things underlined here. You know, when you find a ground pool with water, grass, and weeds growing in it, that's our mosquito problem, so thank you for finding that and going after it. Same thing with the abandoned dialysis building. That's just, that's just right heaven there. So, so there's a lot of good things done by your staff, and I want the public to recognize that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Nice leadership, Richard. Good job.
Is she sitting with the masters of city commissioners? Who are the commissioners she got?
Item eight, Mr. Scott, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight, we're celebrating the installation of our second mural down at the Elmwood Vine Teas. And as we face the likely prospect of having future murals installed in Danville, I would like to suggest that we set aside a date for a special workshop wherein the city staff can give a report to the city commission and the public on the processes used in other cities, other communities in Kentucky, and perhaps nationally, where it seems that they have been doing this for some time with the appropriate resources and the optimal procedure for consideration of those requests. I think it's fair to say that everyone involved in that first art mural suggested we could perhaps develop a better process for consideration of that. And so, that's the goal of this meeting, is to learn from what others have done, and from that understanding, perhaps develop or revise our current procedures to a, one that might work a little better in our community. I would suggest, because it will take just a little while to get this information together, that we consider holding that workshop on either Wednesday, November 14th, or Thursday, November 15th. That would be, from a workflow point of view, a good time to do that if it meets with your schedules.
Are you looking for afternoon, morning?
I think in light of the fact that this is a topic that has a lot of interest in the community, I would suggest we do it in the afternoon at the usual time of 5:30 on either of those days that might suit the majority of the commission.
Neither day will work for me.
Only the 14th would work for me.
I find neither day. You said the 14th was the second possible day?
14th or 15th. 14th or 15th.
Rick?
I'm good either day.
Good either day.
So, what day can't you do it?
I can only do the 14th on Wednesday.
14th it is.
Would you like us to find another day?
No, because then somebody else won't be able to make it.
Okay. Okay.
So, he can't make it?
Can you make it on the 14th?
I'm okay, yeah.
It's everybody but the mayor.
5:30, 5 o'clock?
5:30.
5:30?
On the 14th, does that seem to be acceptable? Okay, we'll work towards that presentation, and we appreciate your indulgence in holding that workshop. That's really all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you waiting to schedule it after the upcoming election.
Well, we possibly could do that ahead of that point.
No, no.
But to do the subject matter justice, we do need to look and have discussions, and, you know, we're pretty close to that date already, so from the staff's point of view, I think the 14th or 15th would work optimally.
Thank you, sir. We are in the section called "Here the Public." This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes with the microphone about any subject that has not been on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right into commissioners' comments, if they have any.
It was a pretty quiet night for the public, I think. Let me make a public announcement, then. You know, we hold a lot of festivals in this town that we generate and draw people to town. This coming weekend will be a little bit different. We're gonna have about 4,000 visitors come through Danville as part of the bourbon chase, and I want to do a shout-out to the CVB and the Heart of Danville and our Chief of Police and our city engineer. We've come together to organize a little bit of a welcome to Danville, or closing off Main Street between Third and Fourth, and have a disc jockey and have a little bit of fun.
I heard you're gonna have a microphone that night. You're a little bit too excited about it.
But that'll be the most fun, having me on the microphone.
I'll be there, so you'll have to share.
Mr. Scott and I had the pleasure of participating in the chamber, what do they call that, Chamber Steel?
Steel Challenge.
Yeah.
Challenge.
We're in, we had two other people join us, Tom Bennett from Frankfort and Tom Spelacy joined us, and we did, we certainly did not embarrass the city of Danville. We held our own.
Yeah, I bet you did. That was rigged, that was rigged doing that.
No, it wasn't rigged.
Tom Spelacy, did you have two former police officers shooting you?
Let's just say he was our A-player.
Yeah.
I'll give you that.
All right.
How much did you pay my daughter to up your score?
Oh, I didn't know she could do it.
She was scoring, yeah.
Now, I know where we need to go next year, but we nicknamed Mr. Scott Dead Iron, so.
That's nice.
It was a nice day. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move right into the...
Wait, 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 I'm sorry. Well, just a shout-out about the upcoming book read discussions. We're doing Martin Luther King's book, Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos Our Community. There's 147-plus copies circulating in the community. We have book discussions next week, starting Monday the 15th through Sunday the 21st. If you've not, if you've gotten a book and you've read it or not, if you've not signed up for a discussion, a group to attend, one or more, please do so.
Where do you sign up?
You dial 859-236-5818, or go to cchr/danville website to do that. And the reason why is that we're willing, we've got folks who volunteered to host the discussions, and they'd like to prepare some refreshments for those who are planning to attend, to attend.
Anyone else? We'll move right into the payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
I move that we approve payment of the bills in the amount of $816,764.97.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 10 is the second reading of ordinance number 1922. Madam City Clerk, you want to read that one, please?
This is the second reading of ordinance 1922, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Danville, Kentucky.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the second reading?
So...
Go ahead.
Made by Commissioner Terry, second, and by Commissioner Atkins, ladies first.
There you go.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Wait.
Nope, excuse me.
Could you, I know I missed the last meeting. Could you tell me a little bit more about this? I don't understand it.
This, every year, I send in the ordinances that were adopted the previous year from June 1st or July 1st to June 30th, or around that time, and they put them into a code book, and where they're online, people can research them, and it just updates them every year.
Yep. I remember now from last year. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry, yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Seres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Item 11 is the second reading of ordinance number 1923. This is in regard to the sewer use amendment. Madam Clerk, you want to read that, too, please?
Second reading of ordinance 1923, an ordinance amending city of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinance Section 18-56 subsection E pertaining to sanitary sewer industrial discharge limits and section 18-80, section 3 pertaining to monthly sewer service charges for industrial customers.
Do I hear a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 1923?
I move that we approve the second reading of ordinance 1923.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Paris? Oh, did you already call? Sorry.
No, but I appreciate your progressivity. It's good. Yes, the answer's yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Seres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
I was gonna ask Commissioner Cottle if he wouldn't mind reading the name of those medals into the record for us, but...
Yes, I will.
No.
And what their purpose is.
No. Item 12 is resolution number 2018-10-08-01. This is a cemetery lot buyback. Donna?
We would ask that you approve this resolution. It's a cemetery buyback from Mr. Walter Troxler, and we have amended it to add his wife and Victoria Troxler, his wife.
Do I hear a motion?
So, move.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Thank you, motion carries. Item 13, get ready, Michelle, to discuss fiscal year 2017-18 year-end financial report.
You have before you the year-end financial report for 1718 financial year. I want to remind you all, this is before the end of the year adjustments that we make, and then you will get another report at the end of the audit that has those adjustments in there. This is, kept in this format in order to keep you all on the same track, as you've all seen all the others in the past, where things adjusted for capital and debt and grants, and taking that back down to actual instead of a budget, so it doesn't construe the numbers. So, we're looking mostly at operational functions in this instead of capital and grants. Your general fund budget is on page one. You ended up the year as expected, as we did in there, that we would have, still have it carry forward going forward. We do have that carry forward. We've, we're using that carry forward, as we had said before, a lot of that to pay for the land for the new fire station. Municipal aid, we spent a little bit extra money on expenses there. We had talked about that during the fiscal year, that we had a really good price on asphalt at that point in time, and we had money in the budget to do so, so we went ahead and paved a few more roads in the last time that we did a paving list. Stormwater come out just exactly like we thought about budget. On the revenue side, on the expense side, it was a little bit under. We have not been doing a lot of projects as of right now. We're still waiting to hire somebody in that position, and when we get that hired, we expect that to go back up to normal. Garbage fund come out pretty much as scheduled. This garbage fund and the municipal aid fund, I want to remind you all, is supplemented by the general fund money to transfer money, and that's a part of those revenues in both of those... of those are general fund money transfers over to it. The utility fund, it's back on track as where it was supposed to be. After we had the increase in the sewer rates, it showed a little bit of an increase over budget, where we got those rates in place, and also due to, like the general fund, has operating revenue surplus. Parking fund, it broke pretty much, even on the revenue side, just about $25,000 over budget, but we really saved a lot of money this year on the operating expenses. Part of that is due to, we've been without a full-time parking garage person for several months now, but we're getting ready to hire somebody, and also it all has to do with, we have to put maintenance in there, especially for the elevator and for stuff that we have to, that we, from time to time, year to year, have to repair, so that was in there, too. This fund also is supplemented, and that income is also money transferred from the general fund, is in that number also. So overall, the year, we had budgeted, and I want to remind you all that we did budget to spend surpluses this year. That's the reason, when you look at your actuals on some of them, that you see, you know, there was more expenses coming out than revenues, but that is because we budgeted it to be that way, because we had surpluses to spend to do that. Overall, it turned out, just as we talked about before, pretty close to what we talked about before when we were doing the budget and had the carryovers that we thought we would have, so that tells us that our new budget year that we're going forward will be okay for yet going forward, as long as revenues continue to come in.
Questions from Michelle?
So, all the carry forward is going to the, by the...
Part of the carry forward is going to buy the land, yes.
Just part of it, not all of it?
Not all of it, part of it, yes.
So we will have some carry forward?
Yes.
Going forward?
Yes, as long as things come through, we have a little bit of carry forward still going forward, yes.
Okay.
Do you know how much?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
On each fund, because each fund has a different amount.
In your report, it stated twice that revenues are flat at this time and also reflecting a flat revenue trend. What do you mean by that?
Revenues have not jumped. They're exactly like we thought they would be with our increase that we have. We've not had a big jump in revenues, which means that, for example, the general fund revenue is based mostly on payroll taxes or payroll license fees, and we've not seen a big increase of that over budget. There was a small, but not a big increase over that over budget, so that tells us that we, it meets our budget expectations, meaning that we didn't, we're not having a big inflow of money coming in that we wasn't expecting. So if we had a great big increase in that, you would have saw, you know, a great percentage go up, but we didn't have that. We only had a small percentage go up. And I want to remind you all, this is the first year that we've had a full year also with that increase also.
With what now?
With the payroll tax increase. This is the first full year of that also.
Any questions for Michelle? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am. Item 14 is Resolution Number 2018-10-08-02. This is a change order for the repair of the Second Street Bridge. Mr. Coffey?
Mayor Commissioners, this is a change order that simply adds the concrete work for the splash pad or the remaining hardscape at the Water Plant Park to that contract. The contract is with local funds, so you have the option to do this. The size of the change order is certainly within a reasonable amount to be added to the contract. The contractor that you have for the Second Street Bridge was the prime contractor in the hardscape already in the park, and so it's a matter of convenience to add the concrete work. We'll be doing separately some of the plumbing, so it will speed up that process of finishing out that hardscape.
I'm glad you explained that, because when I read this, it just didn't make any sense to me at all.
I didn't think, yeah, I didn't think what. We had the benefit of having, the Bluegrass Contracting is your streetscape contractor, and so we asked those guys for prices as well. Recall, they did Whizger Parks concrete work, did a nice job there, and Jave did the water plant, like I said, so, you know, you had two good contractors under contract with an opportunity to avoid the time and involvement of advertising, just the time delay, so...
And if you remember, it's a similar process that we employed on the Whizger Park change orders that implemented the Third Street streetscape improvements.
Yeah.
So there were a lot of change orders to the Whizger Park project that were actually for the Third Street development.
Yeah. I'm like Commissioner Cottle, I appreciate the explanation. I had lines going all over the place here, like, what do you mean change order? It's a different project, but...
You're adding, you're changing the scope, by definition, in this change order, but you're adding some work to that contract, since you've got a good contractor at a good price.
Yeah, it shouldn't save us some money, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, just theoretically.
Right.
Do I hear a motion?
A move for approval of Resolution 2018-10-02.
Thanks, Mr. Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution and motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Motion carries. I might add that if you were downtown this Saturday, Whizger Park Plaza was in full use.
Good deal.
And it was nice to see. As I reminded some folks this morning, you couldn't have done that in the previous park as it existed then. So it was nice to see, and I must say, it's maturing quite nicely up there.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Same needs to be said for the Lexington Avenue Park. Fall gray, isn't it?
Oh, boy. I have not been by there one time.
Oh, it's lovely.
That they haven't been kids in there.
Yeah.
They're lovely.
Yeah.
That's what it's for. That's what it's for. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to...
Wait a minute, you got this.
Do we have an executive session?
We have one additional.
I know.
I think we have one additional, too, that I had...
Yeah, you had the paving list, yeah.
Oh, paving list.
Yeah.
What do y'all want to do with this?
I've got it. I've got it. I had a picture today from the Water Plant Park. I was trying to count the number of cars that was there this afternoon. There was 11 cars in the parking lot just today, and that's been consistent with when I've been by there, too. So we were a little bit surprised ourselves at that, yeah.
It's great. And no water.
And once again, we're gonna compliment Janet Hamner, because Michael, Ham Smith Park is looking very nice down there. Appreciate that. We're coming to Park City.
The paving list is in front of you. There's 13 streets that Public Works identified for us, and it was a last-minute addition. We apologize for that, but felt like that it would give us an opportunity to get this done in the calendar year we're in. The state did extend their opportunity to use the state pricing contract and given some of the market, we feel like that's probably going to be the best price you're going to get right now, rather than going through a bidding process and waiting to the spring. So go ahead and get some things tidied up before you get into the winter weather and then end up with a significant amount of winter work related to some street decay. So get these streets taken care of, and then go into winter, with your permission.
Do you need a motion for that?
You did.
Do I hear one?
A move that we approve the fall paving list as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion?
I had a question. I don't see it on here. I know it's a state road, but Third Street between Main and Broadway is still really rough. That's been patched in several places. Is there any way we can get the state to fix that better before winter?
Yeah, we can try. We'll definitely talk to those guys.
I thought the state was going to do Main Street this fall.
I'm not, I can't remember what their plan was. We talked to them quite a bit. I'll follow up with them.
Thank you.
And pass it on to the city man.
Because right down here...
Oh, also at Main and Maple, yes, is really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we got a motion, a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Motion carries. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. We do have a request for an executive session for the two purposes of personnel and litigation.
Commissioner Cottle, do your thing.
I'll do my thing. A move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel pursuant to KRS 618101F, and a motion go into executive session to discuss pending litigation, is that correct? For which disclosure of details might compromise our litigation posture pursuant to KRS 618101C.
All in favor of that motion? No, I'm sorry, we need a motion to that effect, and a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. We are in executive session.
I thought you Rick was here.
A move that we come back into regular session.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? I'll second that motion.
All right.
All in favor of moving back into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Motion carries. Mr. Scott?
Have nothing to report.
Okay. Anybody got anything else?
I wanted the Texas Hold'em back there, just wanted everybody to know.
Oh, okay.
Took all our men.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. We are adjourned.